Council meeting to order an LFL scan and do a nice bunch of allegiance for the code.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're all the same. That's how many people think it. Okay, council members present, we are all here, so that's easy. Um, now we can move on to the approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
So I have a motion and support, all in favor of tonight's agenda, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, agenda begins. Um, next is the approval of the minutes from the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting.
Approve the regular meetings.
Um, I'll support. So we have a motion and support, so all in favor of approving the minutes from July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, we got a minute. Next is the approval of the treasurer's report for month ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And that is your proposal sheet.
And she just renewed all those CDs, that's awesome. I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion and support, and because it's Monday, Tracy know what to do.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, next is bills and transfers for a month ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Do we want to stop? That. Do you know how to work that? Yeah.
It kind of has to run its cycle.
Right, so we'll just have to go.
Except firstly, creek interceptor bill.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills and transfers ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I have a motion and support, and once our maintenance lady is done, she'll do roll call. Maybe, we just have to, we just have to project. It was. Well, I made the motion and pressed the button.
Yes.
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 Alright. Public comment, um, agenda items only. When we ask, if you do have public comments, they take three minutes, stand up, tell us where you're from, village township, unstate your name. And it is public comment, not public question and answer. If you do have a question, um, at the bottom of our agenda, we have council comments, we will try and answer that question. If we cannot answer it, we will turn it over to the office staff, and they will research it and get back with you when they have a solid answer. So, public comment. Okay, well, thank God that's over. So we will close public comment. And next, we will move on to the report section of our packet. Administrator, um, report. Um, Genesee County nine-one-one dispatch authority, um, moved their location to Linden Road. If anybody would like your address, um, we can provide that, or always check Google. Um, the township, um, participating, um, yeah, the Michigan Township.
Participating.
Participating plan. Um, has sent a notice for their fall twenty twenty-five risk reduction grant cycle, which is open, um. Uh, Sherry would, um, is gonna, is asking for permission to apply for additional security cameras in our park.
Does anybody have any issues with that? No issues?
Free is good.
How are the current owners, how it is?
There are some cameras in the park.
The DPW, um, gets that information.
It's okay.
Yeah, but.
But we, we need more.
Yeah.
The nets for the pickleball courts and destroy those, so if we could have more cameras placed.
Or just ban those pickleball people.
Okay, but we, we. More cameras than the park area is better.
Right.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm good with going for a grant.
Okay, I was just a dig at you, Jack, but I know you love the car.
We also received a thank you letter from, um, Johnny McKenzie, who is the representative for the Good Times in Goodrich, um, thanking the village for their support this year. So, that was nice. Um, notice from the Mackinac Bridge Authority stating that there is less than four weeks to the twenty twenty-five Mackinac Bridge Walk. So if anybody has guts enough to walk across that bridge, here's time is ticking.
The rumor is that they're gonna cancel that, so.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I don't even like driving.
Well, I don't know if anybody's done it.
I don't think they've ever shut that off.
It's unique to do it.
Yeah. You ever done it?
Oh, yeah.
Let's take this conversation off. Okay, moving on, quarterly green communities. Um, Green Communities Newsletter for August twenty twenty-five is.
Interesting articles in there.
In our packet, um, then, last week, the, um, village paid one hundred ninety-eight thousand for our ARPA funds towards our portion of the, um, Tearslake Creek Interceptor. And then, um, for our information, Sherry has provided a copy of the memorandum of understanding between the Genesee, LaPierre Chapter, American Red Cross, and the Village of Goodrich, indicating that we will cooperate and coordinate our efforts and resources when providing assistance to individuals and families who are affected by disaster. Um, the agreement wanted to effect on June fifteenth and remains in effect, um, every year, um, either party notifies the other that they would like to withdraw.
A lot of people don't know that, and I thought I'd bring that you guys to know that that is in fact an agreement we have.
Well, that's kind of nice. Hopefully, we don't ever have a disaster.
I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, Genesee County, Kirby Creek Interceptor project. There's a annual fee, a bi-annual fee.
No, that was, that was our portion of the funds to get the, uh, to get the
Cost, our care was about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This hundred ninety-eight thousand is going off the top of that, so we're down to about a hundred or five hundred and fifty thousand is gonna be what we're gonna have to pay over the next thirty years of our share for the KCI. So that's what that is. We were able to use the ARPA funds towards that.
Okay, so that was the administrator report. Um, next is DPW and straight administrator. And since Matt is here, I will let Matt speak to the DPW report.
Alright. Uh, good times this year, weather was pretty decent for it again. You'll have to go there. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, TBC Topsoil, which is across the road here. Chad Carson came down, one of his guys came down. And they added some limestone cores to the entrance, and they drive it along to the park. And they graded it for us too.
Roll it too.
Yeah.
And that wasn't anything you asked for, right?
They did the bus garage part, and then the park, it's graded it all, compacted it.
That's really nice. We should send them a letter of.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Connor, or something. Did you have any burners? Well, I saw that there is a picture posted, and I heard.
We got some nice black stripes on it.
We haven't painted it.
As interest to a park, it doesn't look as private, and we drive down there and see.
To me, there's a time and place, you might be able to run your broom, our broom. Bring it up, with the gravel, might bring it up.
Uh, bypass. I'm working with cabinet wait, we had some major erosion. Uh, I know it's not the chief, but we gotta use some, and I think my answer is curbing gutter. I don't know how old. I don't know how to follow it.
That's what we talked about when he was out here.
Yeah.
And he hasn't gotten back with you?
Not yet, I hope that, it should be end of this week, I should hear something.
It was. When are we going down there?
It was last fall or?
Beginning of the summer?
But it's good, two point now, we're actually starting to eat underneath.
Yeah.
Well, whatever information we get. The township would like to also have that information, because you have an area, is that correct, Jim?
No.
Now, Matt, are you saying to like resurface, or is there a way we can help with the erosion thing?
No, the erosion's be curbing gutter, that's the only.
The only way you're gonna fix it is to tear it out. At this point, it's washing out underneath and blowing out the hill, going into the golf course. So we're gonna have a we're gonna have a problem.
No, we have to keep in mind, too, is that past twenty-plus years old now, eventually, it is gonna need to be milled and capped at some point.
Even if it's just capped. They won't, they won't mill it.
Yeah, I think it's.
I don't, I don't think they mill it, they just cap over top. Relay it. Tack it and overlay it.
Any money I'll do for funds, uh?
Yeah, sidewalk.
Now, my only question is, is that gonna be an issue? If it, is it considered like a pathway for school, if they have to be ripped out for a portion of time? Can we do it during school session, or if, uh? Like, if it's blocked off and kids can't safely get there, is that?
I don't think that's part of the school.
But we would also not let them know anyways.
Yeah.
That one section coming down, they'll have to be just replaced. That might have to come up.
It's in better days.
Yeah. Put something else in there, and build it up, and.
Uh, ladies library should work, and our foundation should start. Our rising as it was beat today, but we had a similar issue. So it's be played a little bit, probably later on, late this week, we'll start. Uh, they cut a tree down today, that big trees.
They're supposed to complete that job mid-September for the ladies museum.
They're taking that tree down on the corner?
Yeah, the squirrels won't be happy, but that was a huge squirrel.
That's gonna, that was gonna be a problem with the the foundations.
The roofs were going, you see, they were going right into the foundation.
Yeah, we kind of thought that.
You know. So we'll be back before I finish it. Tree. Uh, probably, or I probably, either later on this week or next week, for a second type. Then I'll do third time, probably beginning of October, around there. Whether it's ten. Uh, we started some fresh base repair, we should do that about this time of year, in August. Oh, we should have been, he's been, oh, at the dam, he's done the oh, he's done, he did quarter samples. He did some underwater, uh, everything so far, that's okay. Uh, they still gotta do the inspection, yeah. So, they've been up there. Uh, crack ceiling, I'm still waiting for a machine. I've been in contact with them. It's kind of aligned, so I hope we get it before cold weather. Because I would like to do tunnels back here. The newest roads, Roach Road. Please try to preserve our newest, uh, pavements. Correct. There's some newer ones in there. Yeah, that's about it.
Alright, yeah. Thank you, man. Um, moving on to the, um, code enforcer report. And when Laura is here. After this report. With the packet, I had my Mondays mixed up, so.
You're fine.
Yeah, I was but, um, still no movement in terms of, um, the two dumpsters downtown, the owners have said no. Um, and they've received, there's no violation. Um, so Sherry said she wanted to talk to Mr. Raj, possibly this week, but other than that, it's up to you all, I believe that. Um, and I have a dumpster package to deliver to Reed Elementary, they have the dumpsters behind their school, so we're asking other people downtown to do it. They should comply, so I'll be taking that over to the school. Uh, lots of signs in the village, uh, sent a letter to Cox Electric to tell them to remove some of the excess. It's a little excessive there, you know? When they first went up, I thought, okay, well, they'll, they'll take them down, you know? People will get the idea that they do air conditioning tune-ups or whatever, Generac, but, yeah. Anyway, um, and then this Thursday, Sherry and I have a meeting with Mr. Rashid, who's a representative of Minha LLC, at the Plaza. So I'm pretty much at my wits' end there. The pattern has been, especially since the restaurant has changed hands. Um, you know, I, I took a picture in June, for example, of the long grass. I could literally send him that picture again with a violation notice, because there is no scheduled routine mowing or maintenance of the property. It, it's, he waits till I send him a letter or an email, so the last packet he got, I copied all the previous violations, all the previous pictures. They're the same issues that were last fall. You know, I've asked him to mow the grasses and put the brush back to the tree line. The person who was doing the mowing doesn't have a mower that can handle that. Period. I, I've talked to him, you know, so that's one area. I've asked him to do weed kill, you know, all the grass and weeds that are growing in all the parking lot grass. Kill the weeds, scrape the dead weeds away, you know, that hasn't been done. But I asked him that last year. You know? Again, I could, I just keep recycling the same picture, periodically. Um, and there's a post out in front of Sims Restaurant, has anyone noticed it? It's like this. It's a big, a, a baller, no, like a it's about five feet tall, a big yellow, I think it's supposed to designate a parking lane, but somebody's obviously hit it. You know, so yeah, so I, 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 uh, again, and when these violation notices go out, um, you know, it, it goes out as a certified letter, so I know he got it. Right, it's, it's not like he's not receiving this communication. Um, so Sherry and I have invited him into the office this Thursday morning. Basically, I'm just gonna show him the pictures and.
Court time. Yeah, if he doesn't comply, it's court.
You know, yeah, it's um, anyway, okay, now about that, I'll quit. The next item, uh, it says here, within the last four months, I've sent letters to individuals, actually make it five, because I sent one out today. Um, I am sending individuals letters with a copy of the new ordinance about vehicles. In terms of putting, you know, vehicles in your front yard or backyard that are unlicensed, not being worked on, unused, unsightly. But these are not violation notices, I'm, I'm sending the letter that says, hey, here's a copy of the ordinance, I included that. Here's what it says. Uh, I noticed you have a vehicle that is, you know, is could you please comply and remove it within fifteen days? But at the end of fifteen days, then I'll be sending a notice, a formal violation. What are we gonna do? Only one person so far out of the letters I've sent has removed your vehicle.
Is that something the sheriff department couldn't start ticketing?
Not on private.
No.
Well, you can, you can issue ticket.
Okay.
Yes, you know.
Well, then, that gets your ticket, of course.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm not sure it's gonna, well, we'll, we'll see.
Well, I'll do that out in court later.
Yeah. Because there, every time I drive to the village, I find it out there.
I'm not driving through it, I know.
I know, so I just, uh.
When, when I was dealing with that, I used to approach it and talk and find out if there's any something I don't know about, that they couldn't do it, or they need more time. But writing letters are fine. I like to approach it one-on-one to get the feel of what situation is, and then I can go from there.
Yeah, well. Yeah.
They could contact her.
Yeah.
Situation that, that worked out when they're playing.
Yeah, that did, that did. Uh, some of these vehicles, it's obvious that they have been there for quite a while, with like brush and patches and flat tires and, you know, mill plates. Um, so.
Where they're all supposed to be planted, correct?
Yeah, that's why they're yeah, violation, yeah. So, you know, we'll see, this is a new ordinance, so I'm sending a copy of the ordinance, see. You know, I'm asking people to comply with it, and saying within fifteen days, so I will be checking back. Like, the one I sent out today, I'll check out, check back at the, toward the end of the month, see if they've done it. But, you know, if not, then I can put her out with the ticket. Well, yes and no. Um, yeah, it's a little bit. Um, I, I like to send the letter first, it tells them who I am, what my job is, gives them a copy of the ordinance as opposed to knocking on door code and saying.
Sure.
Yeah. Um, that's just my approach, I'm happy to talk.
Would you hand deliver a violation, or would you sell them all?
Oh, no, I would send that out certified. I want something back from the postal office, you know, the return receipt. Um, okay, finally got a meeting where I did have the one-on-one conversation with the gentleman, Walt's JDI Investments just across the street here. Talked to him about the dumpster and weeds. Uh, he was very reassuring, he was going to address all those things, but thus far, nothing has happened. So I will be following up again with him this week, and, yeah. If he doesn't want to come to the table, then I try to, I hope this week, but um, and that's usually my approach on most things. I've sent out a number of letters throughout the summer to people, just, hey, um, not violation notices, but more like, hey, you know, uh, we noticed your lawn is a little bit long or overgrown. Some absentee landlords that own property, and I've got a couple of those actually, or residences, but um, here's a copy of not just weeds and mowing ordinance, folks, could you please comply for the most part? Um, that has happened. People, you know, I, I checked back, and I'm like, oh, okay, they don't, very good, happy, happy days, you know?
Yeah.
Um, but it, it's like the property just south of the Beacon and Bridge there, those two empty lots. That's owned by someone in Birmingham. They didn't realize, you know, and that was another one, it's a kit mowed, and then it was long again, so I sent that individual a letter and said I would suggest that you have a routine and regular
thermos.
Yeah, to avoid any future, you know? Uh, so, you know, just. Okay. Yeah, just last thing I'm following up on, some, uh, of light and offensive issue that, that I'm going since doing. Alright, well, thank you.
Okay, we'll proceed to our doors this month.
Yeah, hopefully, um, yeah, hopefully, people start complying, or at least get back with you. Well, yeah, it's a new ordinance, uh, the, the Goodrich Plaza guys, uh, to believe that, we've had a lot of conversations there, so. Yeah. Okay, next on the agenda is the, um, building department activity report, um. Total permits opened, um, total is twenty-five in the month of July. Um, we had five, so um, Tracy is continuing to work with the code enforcement staff, so thank you, Miss Tracy, not code enforcement, building department staff, so thank you, Tracy. Um, the fire department activity report, um, that's getting, um, lowered, so that, that's that we have in, especially with all the heat, that those, um, have not been amplified. I don't know, Sheriff's Department Activity Report, um.
Lots of traffic staff signed July fifteenth, wow.
Yeah, fifty-nine. Must have been cooler. So those reports are in your packet for your perusal or entertainment, however you would like to read them. Um, unfinished business, again, we're killing it, we don't have any unfinished business. And then we will move on to new business. And the first thing on new business is adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-five sixteen to authorize spending of twenty twenty-four CDBG funding for seniors in the amount of eight hundred ninety-six dollars plus twenty-six dollars and seven cents paid by the village for a total cost of one thousand twenty-two dollars and seven cents to purchase, um, personal, um, to purchase ninety-three personal safety alarms.
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one six to authorize spending of two thousand twenty-four CDBG funding for seniors in the amount of nine hundred ninety-six dollars plus twenty-six dollars and seven cents paid by the village for a total cost of one thousand twenty-two dollars and seven cents to purchase ninety-three personal safety alarms.
Have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, how do we get the number that we should purchase, and who do we give this to? Anybody, or there's certain criteria?
We have certain criteria. Community development funding, there's certain criteria. They have to sign for it, they have to show their, be a resident, show their identification.
Any age, uh?
Yes, sixty-two.
I'm gonna get your personal safety alarm.
I know, I'm a senior in some aspects, but not others.
Only on McDonald's call.
I'm a Davis Sun Senior Exercise Group.
Boy, if we run out of these
That's it.
Yeah, that's it.
We can't order more, maybe if there's more of a need for it?
And we have. I mean, we could, we could throw something at the agenda to purchase them using village.
This community development funding is funds that we get every three years, we have to spend a certain amount of time. Each year, we, well, we get about nine hundred ninety-six dollars for senior, for seniors. Um, so.
Have you ever distributed all that you bought in the year?
Always.
Not just smoke alarms.
Or not the smoke alarm. We've got about four fire blankets left.
That's.
And that's it. And smoke alarms.
Awesome.
Yeah, well.
The, the emergency radios went real fast.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's cool. I'm happy that we can do stuff like that. Okay, so we have, um, a motion to do this. Um, I, I don't recall hearing support. Okay, I'll support it. So we have a motion and support, we've already done the discussion. So, money, you go, girl.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Alright. Senior, run out and get your safety alarm.
Senior, run out and get your safety alarm.
I haven't got them yet.
They'll be like poles on Black Friday. Right.
Well, I, I let your mother have mine that I bought myself. To go on the trip with you guys.
Yeah, then it went off accidentally when she gained her keys.
How was that?
Um, it was, it was loud, people were looking, um, it definitely, um, gets attention. Because it's not like a car honking or anything, so. Um, the. It, maybe it wasn't a mistake, maybe it was more like an experiment that we did. And, um, yes, it passed. People, people noticed, nobody ran to our, you know, rescue. But they, they were looking, so it did get attention, I mean, had we been yelling help or some other signal of distress. We probably would have gotten help with that alarm. So, yes, I would recommend. All right, moving on. Um, next is adopt a resolution number twenty-two-five seventeen. To reappoint delegate representatives to the Michigan Municipal League expire in November twenty-twenty-six. Um, Chris and I currently the representatives for the Michigan Municipal League. Um. I would like to stay only because like we've developed some relationships and friendships with people. Um. I would like to stay on it. So.
I have no problem with to view unless Mr. Schlenker was really sick last time. Do you want to be considered a good position or you want to let those?
I think the president should, uh, should be there personally. Where was it last year?
Mackinac.
Mackinac.
And then you guys do like the monthly ones also.
Yeah.
So, we're allowing one person to go?
That's two.
Of two? I thought this, okay, I thought of an alternate. That the first one couldn't make it, second one did.
Yeah, they go to the main one, they have to go to the main one for voting.
Annual.
The annual convention, but it's one that goes to just the, the meetings that are.
Well, then I will make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash seventeen to reappoint. Shannon McCafferty and Chris Coverley as our representatives to the Michigan Municipal League expire in November twenty-twenty-six.
I second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Um, Tracy, do roll call on this one just for fun.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, next is. Authorize. The, um, current firewall update, um. Recommended by V C three at a cost of thirty-two thirty-seven, three thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Um, our current firewall is, um, getting old. And they, um, recommend replacement of it to keep up with. The hackers of today's world, so, um. That's why this is on the agenda.
So my only question is with the hardware software, it says advanced edition for three years. And then the C S E for one year, is this something that is that? Nineteen fifty gonna have to be renewed after three years or one year, or is that a one-time fee?
One time.
One time, okay. Well, I know this is an important thing regarding the safety of information and technology, so I'm going to make a motion to authorize the current firewall update. Recommended by V C three at a cost of three-two-three-seven.
Well, sport.
So we have a motion and support. Tracy.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, keep the record safe. Um, next is authorize the payment. Um, in conjunction with Atlas Township to pay the village's share of. That's supposed to be asphalt.
Yes.
Asphalt seal coating of the walking path consisting of. One-third of the total cost not to exceed seven thousand five hundred and four dollars.
So this is not the same thing that you were just talking about?
No.
Um, should. Should the seal coating. Wait till the repairs are done?
Well, you won't have to seal coat it if repairs are done, you overlay it, you won't have to seal it. I would refer to, if they do overlay it, I would prefer to seal it too, but I know. I wouldn't seal it because they're gonna tack it anyway. Ceiling would waste, you know, huge waste amount.
What does tack mean?
Find the two asphalt to go. Oh, you gotta let it sit for a year before you seal it. I would say.
So this ceiling is from where to where?
Lifts the entire bike path.
All the way out to the boundary between the goats and the township.
Right.
We measure that in the distance of the seal coating, that's right about a third of the distance, that's always.
So it's like, like two properties after the country club, but or it starts two properties west of the country.
Yeah. Yeah, well, go, yeah, it doesn't really go to the. Does it, the asphalt start right at the golf course?
I think so, I think those drivers.
There's a west of the golf. Might be two driveways. Is it Feathersons? Yeah, that's what I thought it was too, because it goes from a real small sidewalk to this bike path.
I mean, I'm no engineer, but I think if we just said that it really, really needs to be fixed, I'd rather see us wait at least in our portion. General.
I, I guess it would matter. To me if it. We don't repair all of it. And just repair in front of the fire or the golf course where it's washed out. That would save money because the bike path isn't a problem. Up on top of the hill, it's not a road. So you can seal coat that. And then. Start wherever you're gonna repair it and be new.
Yeah, then I think things more sense, instead of seal coating it and then.
If you're gonna seal coat, if you're gonna seal coat a quarter mile of it. And then repair a quarter mile of it.
Okay, this agreement was gonna be with Atlas Township, would you have anything to add to this, are you okay with us? Not doing that or waiting, waiting?
You guys decide you don't wanna do that third, that's fine with me, it's just, we were supposed to do this last year. So I finally got them this year, you know, quotes out.
Right.
I started this in May, next time I got the quotes out.
I mean, we could seal coat up until where we think it. We wanna replace and, and wait. Because the guys are gonna be here.
Yeah, but the quote includes us though, correct?
Right.
Well, the quote does, but I can't take out.
Well, can you take out a? A portion of it, not all of it, but a portion, like a quarter mile?
I don't see why we could, if you clearly mark where you want us, the boundaries are.
Right.
Do it except for this section.
Right, because we've been waiting for Wade Trim to get back with us on what we can do to fix it.
So that would change the cost then too.
But I think that will change your costs, not so much mine.
Right. We're, we're skipping a section about a quarter mile.
So we're, we're good with what I'm saying there, not to exceed seven, we're not even getting way near. So.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't want it all done, I mean, well.
Well, we can save that in the, you know, in the motion.
Yeah.
And I'll make sure I share those with Fender and Parks and, okay, we agreed, but this section we don't mark up.
Right. When's that supposed to happen?
Uh, if we both approve it, if you approve it, my board approves the next Monday. I was gonna send it to them, and then I'm also sending them all this, like homecoming, home football games, try to work around those dates.
Depending on what their lead time is.
Yeah. Don't do it this weekend, this weekend, or this weekend, put the rest of the dates on.
Well, then with that, I will make a motion to authorize payment in conjunction with Atlas Township. To pay the village's share of asphalt seal coating of walking path consisting of one-third of the total cost. Not to exceed seven thousand five hundred and four dollars and with the knowledge that a section will be marked off by our D P W to have them not seal coated.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Because it's money, Tracey.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Next is. Concur with the recommendation of the D P W supervisor. To award the bid for the replacement D P W garage front entry door to Davidson Overhead Door. Ink at a cost of four thousand. Five hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. Ma'am. You wanna explain?
Cause the main entrance door, I saw it used all the time. I did get a second price and they were within thirty hours of me to apart. But we, uh, we've used a, it's that overhead door for years. So it's. Not very much that they're perks.
Can't put the door?
No, that frame is, you have to chisel the frame off because they poured the wall and. The wall, uh. Door down, that's kind of one. Yes, it's your cat hammer the frame.
Okay. Saw cut it out.
Ever saw, yeah, that's why the price is so much, it's not, uh.
Right, have to peel the siding back.
Hmm, no, still, we'll get that side.
Okay.
That's why it's so expensive. Same, same thing, I'm like, why is it so expensive? He's like, well. They poured the walls.
They set the, they set the door and the wall when it was still wet.
Yep. He said, we've done this before, they're aim, so when we are all eight, put my door.
Saw cut it out.
So you said we've always used them, are they the ones that did that last time, that poured the cement?
No, no, that's original, that's our, one of the most plays back. Two thousand four.
And you really need a door, really?
He said it's the door, door cancel.
I will, uh, make a motion to accept the recommendation of D P W supervisor to award the bid for the replacement D P W garage front entry door. To Davidson Overhead Door Incorporated at the cost of four thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-three cents.
Anybody have any other questions on the garage door?
I do, uh.
I have a feeling.
Like. I can't really support this because I feel that I'm on the board. We've got, uh, close to five thousand dollars. Someone should contact me so I can just go down and take a look at what, what I'm voting for, and they haven't done that. I think it may be slighted, I mean. Like, people put me on the council to make sure that the money is spent properly. And I need to know ahead of time what I'm spending. Well, I can't vote for this even though I think it probably needed. That's my comment.
Those are fair. Anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and we have a second, so, and it's money, Tracy roll call please.
Yes.
Lucy.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, next is. Authorize the payment to Civic Plus for yearly online code hosting. From ten thirty-one twenty-twenty-five to nine thirty twenty-twenty-six at a cost of one thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Jerry, would you like to talk to us about code hosting?
Well, the, this is the company that takes care of our ordinances online. And make sure that they're all, when we send them new ones, they, they put them in there, send us the copies, I'll make sure everything's up to date.
Okay.
They run the program that makes it easy for anybody to go in and find things, you know.
Yeah, no, I've used it many times.
Make a motion to authorize payment to the Civic Plus. For yearly online code hosting from ten thirty-one twenty-twenty-five to nine thirty twenty. Twenty-six at the cost of one thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion and support, any questions on code hosting? Hey, Tracy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. All right, we will continue to post codes. Um, that's our items for discussion, and again, this is merely discussion, we're not voting on anything. We're just discussing. Um, last week, we had talked about, um, properties for a potential fighter department. Um, now, um, we should. Talk if we were to sell a piece of the village property, we need to talk fair market value of village-owned property. Um, and in this case, we'll be talking about the property located on East Hebo Road. So, um.
Am I correct that? We can't sell it for more than we paid for it, wasn't that the discussion when we got it?
It used to be the law, that way, the laws change, you can now.
Okay.
Because it's, it belongs to the people. That's fair. They have a right. To do that.
Yeah, so, um, we got. We have a bunch of pieces of paper in here. Um. I don't. I am not a realtor, but I know somebody who is, um, that may or may not want to discuss, um, what we're looking like.
I mean, what we're looking at is a, a called C M A, it's a comparative market analysis, and what it is, is, uh, they take similar. Baking land properties, uh, usually within the vicinity. So it has to be within the township or within the village, and. There, you know, have similarities, and it breaks it down on what they sold for. And then kind of gives you, um, a recommendation of what. This realtor feels the fair market value of this, which is a hundred and twenty thousand. And it looks like they used. Five, five different properties that sold within. The township or the village of Goodrich, um, all. Around five acre baking land parcels, so, I mean, one fifteen, one twenty-nine, one oh eight, one oh eight, one oh five-five. Which then came out to. A fair market value of a hundred and twenty thousand, so, and that's just a recommendation.
So we can jump in the gun a little bit before we have a. Town hall meeting to see if the homeowners.
I was asked, I was, I was asked by, uh. By him.
Yeah. Where, where are we at with that?
The ward was receptive to a home town hall. They were asked for us to make sure we could afford it before we went to that effort, that's why we asked for a ring for. Let's say you're gonna sell it for a million dollars, we couldn't afford that, but if it was something that was affordable, then we'll. See you with the town hall.
Oh, we're gonna make it two minutes. Well, lucky for you, it's a hundred and twenty-nine. Um.
My only question with these fair markets is like the ones that shown here, that one that sold in twenty-twenty-three. I mean, I just know, right now, it's a lot higher than that, so. So I know, I know, this is, that's my discussion, like. Are, and where are we, I apologize because I've not blessed me, are we selling that?
We're, we're merely discussing what, what our options are.
And Jim's supposed to be setting up a, a town hall of all the residents. And it's gonna place the hold it. Just to see where they stand, uh, if they would like to live next to a fire hall.
But he needed an idea of what he may charge. So if, because if it's not something they can afford, he's not gonna bother.
Right, so.
Well, in order to put in the fire hall in, are we talking about taxing the residents and that was it, uh? How, how are we gonna prove it with the money?
Our current plan is, obviously. Our, our plan is to get our fire notes renewed next year.
Right.
Uh, we are still pre- we may ask for a small increase in mileage, we may ask to stay at it. And then what we're gonna do is just like last time, we'll sell bonds. And then use that money to pay off the box. This is current strategy.
So we, we've got quite a ways to go before we even find out. If the people are gonna approve this with money.
Well, next year, the fire department, uh, millet comes up. Well, next year, the fire department, uh military is up for it.
Right.
If they vote down, we have a fire park.
Right.
So that'll be the first quarter we have to vote.
The window, like I said, we've got hurdles, you know.
Well, this is a five year project, sure, so we're trying to start now and if we can find a property, get the property acquired, can we get that paid off? Then we start putting money away for the build, we'll have our architect and go through that whole process.
So then what would happen with the current?
The current one, we have two options, if we have to sell that and take that money to help pay for the new one, that's one option. If we can finance the new one in such a way that we don't have to sell the old one, then at that point, this body and my board get together and figure out what to do.
You get a community center with mill partners.
Right, yeah, that's.
Oh.
That's.
Yeah, no, no, not a community center, it would have to be senior citizen center so we could get.
Yeah, so we can use CDVG money.
Senior center with mill plant access.
Yeah, thanks for that. And then what else would be municipal party and municipal like property? It it would, it would offer um mill plant access to all residents who would have to be.
I know we tend to diver a little bit, this discussion's all about the property. I just.
Yeah, it's not.
Last month he was here.
Yeah, I I apologize to you.
So I I guess my question is, is that a fair market value seeing that they're two year old numbers?
It was just done.
Yeah, cause it. But like Melissa said, those were sold in two, in twenty twenty three.
Yeah, so what happens is if you go, you have to continue to go back to go refine the comparisons, I mean, bacon land is very. Subjective.
Yeah, right, right.
I just said it's worth, somebody's won't pay for it, but all those are given different locations, you know.
Different uses.
Different uses, so.
Zone different.
But it's not a million dollars.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, over the last couple of years, we've seen property as partnership, both from anywhere from one fifteen but one hundred thousand. So to me, that's all. The lot right. And a lot of it has to do with location.
I have a, I have another question, now this. This hundred and twenty is what we can, what we can ask for.
You can ask anything.
You can ask anything you want, that's just.
So when you say ask everyone, if we were to sell this and we say, is it, is a closed bid situation?
Yeah.
And we, we can give a start, so we can say two one thousand.
So, well, yeah, we have to do, we have to do bidding or we could do a vote of the people, I, it depends, it's the, I. Gave Shannon a copy of the of the law for that and um. Is it in here? I don't know if I gave, put it in there or not, um. Yeah. Yes.
And I.
So we'd have to a vote of the people.
But maybe.
Maybe.
Before we can give them an answer on what we're gonna ask for.
Maybe, it does.
Okay.
It it it's, there's a couple of.
Depends on what.
Way we we can go.
Right, it depends on, you know, I would think that it would depend on a couple of things, I mean. Fair market value is one twenty, what do we, what do we ask for the property and with the. If the people wanted this and you know, why, what's? What's a fair amount, I guess, or the other option is a closed bid and then highest bidder wins.
I guess my question is, if hypothetically all this happens and people find out we we wanna sell it so they can build a fire station, then this is just me not knowing or asking. Are our taxes paying for that fire station, so people are gonna say, well, if you guys sold it to them for three hundred thousand, we're all now having to flip the bill and our tax dollars to pay for this?
That would be part of the village. The villages that are.
That is like a catch twenty two that really, wow, that just got my heart so upset. So like, yeah.
Not only that, but somebody that doesn't want it that lives near it could say, well, it's the twenty five million dollars to keep them out. Right?
Which I, and that was my question too, is like, when you look at the report, they get like seven calls a month or like the fire, like EMS is called out, so. I'm just, I mean, I mean, I would be interested if you're on the public.
That's, that's what I'm, what I, cause I, I know the last time they wanted to build something back there, I was on council then and I know. I know how upset people were, I mean, granted, it was not a fire station, it was something completely different. But, um, that's why I think it's a good idea to get like the, um. Fairview subdivision, Goodoriginal subdivision, people that live along Eagle Road, um.
Everybody within a quarter mile.
And and just to have like a general consensus of of people. I mean, I don't like making decisions based on less than one percent of the population. And I don't want, you know, I don't want three people standing up here saying, yes, 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 and then, you know, we do something that. Seventy percent of the population is like, no.
And I think it would be the flip from what I've heard from my subdivision, it's like, what if two people come in, they're like, absolutely not, and they're the only voice in the night. People are like, well, we're fine with it because, you know, it's. Yes, I said, we really need to make sure everybody was here to.
Yeah, so that's why we suggested having like a town hall type thing, get get ideas.
So do we, not to hold Jim up, but it sounds like we're probably gonna have to because.
Well, let's put it this way, it'll, it'll be at least a hundred and twenty, right?
Right, it's at least a hundred and twenty.
Say a hundred.
Thanks, yeah, that's all I was looking for, that's within my budget, I can afford that, so I would like to go ahead and totally.
What is your budget? If I know your end game, I can help.
But Jim, Jim again, that might not be what they sell it for, what they're trying to say, they could sell it for a hundred and fifty thousand.
You can sell for a hundred and fifty, you can sell for eighty.
Okay, sorry. You're okay, so you're willing to go forward to get the information. You're not committed to that.
Right, right.
Right, now, I think it's, I think it's worth having a public hearing, just, just so, just so we know.
What's your max budget?
All we have to.
In line, you can look at their.
All we have to do is pull their financials online and look to see what their general fund balance says, and they were sitting on a whole lot of money.
Oh, it's over that.
Yeah, no, that's what I was looking for, we go to the next step, and then if we do that next step and the public's against it, it kind of stops the project. If the public is for it, then we go to the next step and figure out, okay, what is the price, how do we do transfer, how do we lock?
Right.
So would we be out of line if he went back to his, his people and said between one twenty and one fifty and are we locked in there?
I would just say that. Don't give them, but, yeah, I mean.
Starting at one twenty, I mean, we could say, you know what, we, we talked to some people and they really think that we could get like four trillion for it.
Or we can have a deal and we don't want it for us.
You know, I mean, it's, it's starting, it's starting at one twenty, so I think it's still worth having a public hearing just to get. The the opinion of the public.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it is gonna affect some residents, so that, that I think is a great idea, um. You know, social media, whether it's postcards, things in the paper, postings up at, you know, wherever, flyers up on telephone poles at the library, at restaurants. Wherever, um, but just to get the word out to get, to get people to come to the public hearing. Yes. Yeah.
My understanding from last one is we wanted to invite the village.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We still wanna go there.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have backup properties?
Uh, we have one, we're starting to look at is like a B.
But that's out of town, right?
That's outside the village, so we'll be in the township, that's not a preferred location because of increased response qualities to the east side of township. We're trying to stay in the center and unfortunately, that's where the village is, that's why we're focusing our book in this area.
Okay.
We've had a long way to go before we're even seeing the light of the tunnel yet.
Oh, yeah, we probably have a new station for at least, I'll say, five, seven, ten.
Right.
But I wanna do it one step at a time.
We have to, that's the people that live there won't be there. Right, I mean, on an average, they move about every five years. So. I know the house on the corner of your sub, that thing's been sold ten times since it's been built.
Okay, so, um, that discussion's, I think, done. Um, now, thank you, Jim. Um, so let's see, so we can do that, next is public comment on, anything you would like to comment on, um. We asked you, Gun, that you leave it to us three minutes. Okay, who are, where you from, Village Township, and if you have a question? We'll wait until the council comments before we can answer it, if we can answer it, again, if we can't, shift it over to our staff. And um they can research it and get you a solid answer. Why?
She's holding her hand up back there, you're just ignoring her.
Well. I have to get this out so people understand what my rules are, do you have a problem with that story in the van? Okay, yeah, sorry.
All of the village and some of you up there said within somebody each of the location, or that's, it should be all of the village, correct?
I mean, they're just not gonna target like people that live by the neighborhood or whatever. Right, no, I mean, that.
Yeah, I, yeah, there'll be a public notice.
Other thing is just out of curiosity, where um we're talking about violations and tickets, how much are those tickets? If you issue them, how much is a ticket for a violation?
We will, we will answer that question and council comment.
Thank you, and final thing, um, Good Times in Goodrich, I've heard some rumors, I don't know if they're true or not. That Jenny McKenzie is not interested in continuing.
She wants to return.
And I don't know about Jimmy Green, but I mean, is Good Times gonna kind of fizzle out or? Would the village maybe wanna take that over or some?
Leave in a chamber.
Chamber?
There you go.
You know, I mean. Who would, who would decide what happens with Good Times in Goodrich?
We will, we will address that as well, like council comments and then I'll. You're very welcome, Madam Resident. Okay, any other, any other public comments?
Sorry, officer.
Oh, yeah, he's always on medication.
I gotta text the. I had to leave earlier, so I apologize.
No worries, no worries.
I'll reach out to him about the start of school, he loves me.
He's gonna be like, awesome, Melissa, I gotta. Okay, so if there's no other public comment, I will shut down public comment and I will open up council comments, um. To answer the question about who would take over Good Times in Goodrich, I would imagine that that would be left up to the Good Times in Goodrich people and who they. Solicited to take, to take that over, um.
It's a nonprofit organization, we wouldn't have anything.
Right.
Yeah, it'd be more worse.
You know, when, if the chamber would like to take it over, I mean, they could always. Um, go to the chamber.
I mean. Seeing that Flint was here, they maybe look at, they had all their judges and a trailer down here promoted it. Maybe they're looking to expand. The ones that put on Back to the Bricks. They had like fifteen judges here. So, and they were promoting it on, I guess they were reporting it on the radio. Cause it's the week before there, so maybe they're looking at expanding.
And then we had a second question of how much are the tickets if you issued a ticket from code enforcing? I don't remember what that number was.
I'd have to look at the resolution or ordinance, I don't know.
Is it different?
Do you remember?
Violation, or is it just like seventy five dollars violation?
I think it's standard.
Standard.
Standard, yeah, I know.
I'll, I'll get that up.
Okay. Well, again, well, again, that.
But if it goes to court, now that's up to the judge, that's a whole other.
Right, right, if they pay a regular ticket that's issued by the code enforcer, it's one, if it has to go to court, then it's one. Okay, um. Any other council comments?
Well, speaking of tickets, uh, if our code enforcement person has to do a ticket, gentleman in the back would be a nice person to witness it.
Yeah, I know in the past when they had to issue tickets, um. I mean, depending on if you, if you know who the person that you're issuing a ticket to is going to be like friend. Then, you know, hey, here's, but if they're gonna be foe, you may wanna have it on board.
This whole person. It's eighty five percent of it can be resolved before it gets to you.
And then, and you know, like now you have the vehicle, so I just sent them a letter or a copy of the organs. Yeah, but I don't always go shop.
Does anybody else have any comments, council comment?
I just, uh, I'm still waiting to hear back, I, you know, like it's faring about the tree information, so thank you guys for letting me do that, most people were receptive, one lady. Didn't get my card until six weeks after and said, hey, can I still try and get a tree? So hopefully if it works out, there'll be two more on Eagle, two in Fairview Hills and three in Goodrich Meadows. But we can see if we can, and then after, if we get the grant, then I have to call Ms. Dick and see if they can all be placed where we like.
All right, good job.
Thanks.
Well, I have a comment, uh, you mentioned about Reeves, that, uh, how are you doing on that, did you have a good response on that?
I just emailed her this morning and I'm hoping for a reply because it's gonna come.
Okay.
Okay, um, school's gonna be starting soon, everybody practice your, um. Three times, three times that big trucks or buses can slow down, um, be safe.
Please be safe on Eagle, go twenty five.
Right, otherwise we can chase you down. And next time. Hey, we're not there yet. Motion on the floor, sorry. Okay, so now next is adjournment, we have a motion and we have a second, all in favor of adjourning, say aye. Any opposed? One day, I'm gonna do it. Oh. Oh, wow, go, go be a, go be a movie star, do a little commercial.